Welcome to the Towne Belgrade Planning Board Meeting, September 5th. It is just about 6:01. We are gonna proceed with a call to order with a roll call. Tonight at the meeting, we have Mr. George Seal, Mr. Craig Alexander, Mr. Hans Ronsmussen, myself, Sarah Wang Gett, and I will invite the audience to introduce themselves. Karen Raffens.
Chris Bradley.
Jonathan Townsend, Franz Myslansky, and the Lake and Resources.
Natural Resources.
Where y'all are.
Cynthia McCarthy.
Ted Fontaine.
Paul Pfeffer.
Lori Eifert.
Thank you. So we do, just with the, we do the roll call, so the person that is doing the minutes for us know who was who, alright? Besides the sign up sheet. So the first order of new business is the application from Robert Pepping. The location is at 102 Pinnen Scope, map 37 dot 2 for the purpose of shoreline zone ordinance and is it after the fact permit for a 17 by 17 perimeral patio? I'm gonna go quickly over the application. This is a great pond. Assistant source disposal system type is on the map with the permeable rocks. No, one second. Well, present number of bedrooms is three. Bedrooms should be added under this application. It will be none, isn't it? It says three here, though. So we zero there? With that?
No.
So we'll put zero there, bedrooms to be added on the disapplication.
It's zero.
Zero, good. Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna need you to sign that off on the little next word that will change that. When did the purchase of the property within the shoreline zone? It was in August 28 of 2020. Total lot area is 22,064 square feet. The lot area within the shoreline zone is the same amount. Square footage of the vegetated surface within shoreline zone, including all structures, driveways, parking, walkways, and patios is 10,359. What is the total area of clear opening of wooded vegetation in square feet? Is 12,772. Total number of structures on the lot is one. Percent structure square footage. Says lot 38. 1,986 square feet, non-vegetated. Lot 2, 10,359, non-vegetated. But I'm not sure that's one is the present and one is the proposed?
There are two controlling laws.
There are two controlling laws.
Right away, we're still.
So is the same number for both? I'm getting is adding both lots and there's the same number for the present and the proposed? Well, the proposed is 17 by 17, isn't it?
Yes, I got it.
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, 17 by 17. So it's, the proposed will be the addition of all the numbers plus 298. We'll have to update the application with that.
I, I believe he added the patio in with the non-vegetative square footing. When that was calculated.
So it's in the 10,359 square feet.
Correct.
Okay. So that will be the proposed. Alright, with that, I open the floor for comments. And we'll start if, ask the applicant if you have any any comments or
Yeah, so basically last year, when we, we did some rip route to the shoreline and I was working with the state of Maine and they helped me with the permitting. Seven Lakes Alliance came out and also continued to help me with the permitting because it was during COVID and the state needed additional help. At that time, we did ask if we could have a patio and we were told yes, as long as, as it was permeable. We walked through with, I think it was Stuart Cole maybe, of everything that we planned on doing and we were told that he would go ahead and amend our permitting application to the state. What he did at that point, I'm not sure, I'm not aware of. We were told that as long as our patio was permeable, it shouldn't be a problem.
He's with the DEP.
With Seven Lakes Alliance. He was, he was helping DEP. Because they were so backed up that he was helping me with the PBR permitting to make sure that I filled everything out correctly and didn't have to keep going back and adding more and paying more money after the fact. Yeah, I did take pictures of the patio. All of the stones are permeable. It's, it was put down with the half inch and then the gravel in there so that the water goes right through. So if there wasn't any confusion, we were under the understanding that we could move forward and do that.
So you gotta clarify this for me, so do they have like the DEP?
It's, it's called a PBR permit. Yeah, yeah, that I applied for and at the time, Seven Lakes Alliance came out to assist us with completing the permit correctly. And at that time, he was making amendments and modifications to what I had already sent in. They wanted to go ahead and do the work of the rip route, but we had already hired somebody. And then we had talked about the patio and they were like, it shouldn't, there's no problem, you can go ahead and do it. At the time, I was not aware that we had to go through the Towne Belgrade as well. Yeah.
Because it's not on.
Yeah. Yeah, he told us we could do additional walkways too, in which we did not do.
You might, next question, what's called, what's your, okay, hold on.
Well, it's within 75 feet of the waters in the setback. Permeable patios, I think, I feel like you're a victim of bad information because they do not consider permeable patios are considered structural. They, they don't allow that you face them well. And that's kind of the rule of progress. Will vegetation grow? Or doesn't, then it's structure.
Yeah.
Add structure.
The only thing that grows through is weeds.
No, we're gonna let it grow.
PBRs only go back, the online records only go back to 2021 and you built this in 2020.
Yes.
What year?
When, when Robert purchased the land, he was told that he had to have three quarters of the camp built by a certain period of time or he would lose it in the birth of the cause in him. So he, for most of the work that was done and the subject tank system was through Gary.
Yeah. So you did the patio last same fall? So you, the property was bought at the end of August 2020. So the first thing you did was the patio?
No, no, we just did the patio last year.
Yeah.
The structure itself was built right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, and last year is when the grass was, you know, seeded.
It was in the shoreline stuff.
And we were losing our, we lost like three feet of the shoreline, so we went ahead and applied for a permit to do rip route.
Okay, so in 2020, you, you removed the cottage and rebuilt it?
No, the cottage was already removed.
Already removed, yeah.
The original owner had, we're gonna build right away and, and they, the builder got sick or something, I think. So then, years, a couple of years went by, like maybe five and they said, well, if it was okay to build it back then, then he said, okay, we'll give you a path. So they go to path, but put a, put a structure on.
So
And then they sold it and I bought it and I bought, and that was okay, we were told we could do it.
Yeah, we, we, plane board approved what the camp construction were putting, Craig was on the board, I was on the board. Rich Baker and Peter Rush was the chair at the time, that, that was in 2021, August 6, 2021. So that's really not an issue. What's, the only thing that's at issue for us tonight is the patio and the fact that it was constructed without a permit and whether or not after a fact permit can be issued. The Hans has already brought up the matter of that patios, the permeable patios are not, are one, considered a structure, so they have to comply with all the setbacks. And number two, DEP does not consider them to be permeable. You may recall from the training we had last winter, this slide, which indicates that those are not considered vegetated surfaces.
Well, we don't have the camera going.
And the reason for that, the reason for that is because research has shown that they're not very effective. It's unfortunate that Seven Lakes Alliance apparently gave you some really bad information and way beyond their pay grade. The clearly whoever you talked to didn't know a blessed thing about shoreline zoning. The the fact that this is a structure is pretty basic stuff. And, and so I don't know, Hans, at some point, maybe we should be talking to her, not be giving out advice either, they're gonna give out bad advice. But that, be that as it may, it doesn't change the fact that the 17 by 17 patio is a, a new structure. And by the way, after the fact permits, we, we treat as if it's not been built. The fact that it's already built doesn't matter to us. The the, it's a new structure and so it has to comply with the 100 foot setback. And in your case, it does not. The other aspect, because it's considered not permeable but impermeable surface. The, you're already at, the ordinance does not allow more than 20% of the lot square footage in the shoreline zone to be unvegetated. You're with, with this, the 10,300 square feet that you've indicated is unvegetated, including this 17 by 17 patio, would bring it to 47% of your shoreline zone lot area. So that's, you know, towards this.
So that's what I'm questioning. That doesn't sound right. Is that number correct? I don't think, something's not right there.
Yeah, I
This is, this much written on the permit, but I don't believe that's correct. Yeah, I don't either.
So I, so I was told to, I was given this form here as far as this square footage and maybe I filled it out in exactly with the two lots.
Yeah. So the house itself, it might be 800 square feet, maybe, I think it's
900 is the opening canopy number.
Yeah.
Because of those figures, they are what you told me to write down.
But non-vegetative is your driveway, your camp, and the papers.
So what, I think what he put in there is what's across the street too, because we weren't sure like the lot across the street, does that count too? Or is it just the lakeside lot?
Is, is that in, within 250 feet of Great Pond, then it counts too.
Okay.
So the section within 250 or the whole thing?
Just the section within 250.
Alright, so that's all you include is what's in within 250 feet. About with these numbers, they have. I don't know. Something's wrong.
So, yeah, but you know, the
Like a half an acre of non-vegetated.
So, you know, but the other side of that is the acreage that's within, or the square footage that's, the total square footage that's in 250 feet of the lake on the other side of the road also counts towards your answer to your question in question number seven. So, you know, it, it changes the denominator.
Of your question for answers.
Yeah, yeah, because you, you have just barely over
Yeah, so that should be almost 40,000.
Yeah.
So
So that was just that half a lot on that side of the house. But the acreage, you know, the, the 10,000.
So we'll add a minimum, need you to read, you know, come up with a more accurate numbers for those.
So I would, I would suggest table. Where you can make sure you have accurate numbers. Now, would you want both sides all included or just that side or?
Because that's from the bag walls permit I made did for the camp. So Hans gave me that paper and told me to make sure my numbers matched and that's what I did.
So they've got the house lot on one side of the right way and this will be the other lot. The septic field is across the right way.
Yeah, this must mean just the other lot. This, this right here. Because this is for lot 38.
Yeah, I think it's almost like
Or, I'm sorry, wait a minute.
Wait, 10,000.
It doesn't even have a lot on here.
It's a lot size canopy cover. It's within the setback. Was this the real issue?
What's that now?
The seven, the patio was within the setback.
Yeah, yeah, right. That is, that is an issue in terms of our ability to permit it. But what, the entire process, you know, even if we ultimately decide to deny your permit because it's, the patio is within 100 feet, you still have the right, admittedly somewhat of a long shot to file an appeal with the Board of Appeals. And so I think we should have everything on the table.
I agree.
Because on top of that, the caveat
I mean, it's ultimately your call, but
Right, and the caveat too is tomorrow morning, the state's coming out because they need to do an addition on our camp to fix our well water that's contaminated with salt for reverse osmosis. And he's bringing a builder out tomorrow, so hopefully we don't have problems with that.
Wait, I'm sorry, now I'm confused.
So our wells have been contaminated with the
Oh, salt, with salt. Oh, so somebody from DOT is coming out to sample your well?
No, they, they tried a new well, they failed. They're bringing a builder out tomorrow because they have to build an addition to fix our water.
Are they putting a filtration system in? Is that what the addition's for?
Yes. Because when we built, we weren't told that the wells were contaminated and contaminated.
What, what side of the home that is, does the work is gonna be on?
They're hoping to do it on the shoreline side. They attach it right into the main camp because across the street is where the leach field is and the septic tank.
On, on your camp, we're, we're getting way beyond this.
Right.
Before us on your application here, but the on, on your camp, where are they gonna be, where are they gonna put the filtration system? Is it on the lakeside of the camp or is it on the roadside?
They wanted to put on the roadside because all I hate is on that side and all the time they're in there.
Okay.
Okay, but you don't really have a lot of room there.
Under shoreline zoning, that helps.
And I'm not gonna let them just put up a shed, I'm not gonna let them.
Yeah, because, and the ordinance well, actually, when, when, yeah, yeah, no, I'm, sorry, I'm thinking out loud, it's dangerous. The the front of your camp is just about 100 feet from the, from the lake. So the camp, the camp is conforming for that respect, in that respect. But if you put an addition towards the lake, that would be not conforming, making it not conforming and the ordinance doesn't allow you to do that. But if you I mean, you, you need a permit, okay? You need a permit from, from under town shoreline zoning for this to put, put the addition on, but the
Well, hopefully since the state's doing it, you know what they need to do.
I work for the state, don't assume that.
Yeah.
I spent my career there. The DOT doesn't know anything. Oh, well, you said it was DOT.
Yeah, DOT, right.
DOT doesn't know anything. The and that's no slam on them. They just don't, I mean, they don't deal with it. The and so by having it away from the lake on the side of the camp, away from the lake, you're not making your overall structure more not or making it part of it, not conforming. So that would probably allow us to issue a permit, I think.
Well, yeah, it's also beyond 100 feet on the backside of your camp or something.
Yeah. Actually, you could even put it on the sides for that now.
Well, well, how much, how far from my neighbor do I need to be?
Because it's
The property line. How many?
10 feet from the property line.
So
But what I would advise is getting together with Hans on that because I don't wanna be guilty of the same thing I was critical of Seven Lakes Alliance of giving you
Right.
bad information with limited information. Whereas Hans could deal with it in a more detailed way than we can here and now.
Right, I understand. But when they're coming in the morning, I thought I would just ask.
Yeah.
That would be a separate permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, would be a separate permit. Are they putting a reverse osmosis system in or?
They have to.
Just like this system, yeah. In fact, it always would be just like
Because right now it's eating all of our appliances. We have no hot water. And I'm getting really grouchy because it's not fun showering in cold water.
Right.
It's corroding everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's bad.
So I got a quick question here. So the, the application is for the patio and the patio is within a 75 foot mark. So I mean, from the ordinance, obviously that is no, no matter how, how much more information comes in. Yeah. So we, we're not gonna go to issue a permit regardless. I also heard from Mr. Surgeon that maybe we should go and do a side busy, but I don't know how that will change the, the final outcome.
I just, you know, make sure the measurements are correct.
Well, that's their responsibility, not ours. It, it, like I said before, my personal opinion, I can't speak for the other board members, is it, it kinda comes, it's partially your call. I mean, as Sarah said, you know, the 100 foot setback is not being met, so we would have no choice. We don't have any authority to approve this under the ordinance. For that reason and that reason alone, the only question for you to consider is whether you think, thinking about possibly appealing any decision that we make and wanna have the correct numbers as part of that discussion.
Okay. Okay.
Because if it's not, then we could move ahead tonight with a decision. But it's not gonna probably be a favorable decision.
That's the way you want me doing.
But even if you have the square footage in your zone, now on feet.
Yeah, the measurement from the water is
The only choice we have is either pull it out or appeal it, right? What we gonna think about?
So we're gonna table the application?
Is that what you want? Or you want us to have a decision? Well, we decided to do it with me.
Well, no, it's not, because we haven't voted and, and but I'm just kinda reading the tea leaves here and what's in the ordinance, you know. A little bit more reading the tea leaves, but the I just wanted you to have, you know, the facts in terms of, you know, your decision making, because it's just, so as Craig said, it's a question of, do we, do you wanna, do you want us to table the application?
Yeah, can't we do that?
And you can come back with the revised unvegetated numbers and, and, and total area within the shoreline zone within both sides of the road.
Yeah, okay.
And, and then we'll act on that. At the end of the day, it may not get you any further to having that patio there, but to be honest, but
But it'll give, let me give me a chance too to know what the numbers are and I'm not trying to screw anything up.
Yeah, no, yeah. We understand that, you know, I, I mean, so
I just, I'd like to double check.
As I said earlier, it's truly unfortunate that you're giving incredibly bad advice by Seven Lakes Alliance.
Okay, so I'd like to table if we could.
So I will entertain motion to table this application.
I'm gonna draw any water out of the lake. Yep.
My foot valve is probably and the water is awesome. So we, our wells are
Do I have to say?
It was, it's drawn right out of the lake.
Are you near the same area?
No.
Map 37 lot 2.
What was your contaminated with? Right, so do I hear a second? Is yours contaminated with? So, so we're gonna vote on top, tabling the application for Mr. Robert Eppen on map 37 lot 2.
Could you keep it down, please?
Sorry.
We're trying to run a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
So what we're voting, Mr. Surgeon?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Missa Wang Gett, yes, it's four in favor and all opposed. So we table.
Any thought on when you might be back with revised?
When's the next meeting?
So is that when you wanna back? And we're gonna just create like one lot instead of breaking into
Okay, that will be easier.
As one though.
Yep.
Okay, we're good.
Alright, very good.
So can I clarify this one more time? The square footage are gonna be measured on is it the entire lot in the back or is it just within 200?
Just within 250 feet of the lake, because it's, it's, it's the 20% rule is based on 20% of the lot area in shoreline zone. We, we have no jurisdiction outside of shoreline.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to
Yeah, that's a good question. I didn't think of that. Yeah, because it could be 220, I don't even know. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna keep going here with our new business. The next application is from Cynthia McCarthy. Location is at 77 Espalving Point, ground, map 46, lot 30. Purpose is shoreline, shoreline zone ordinance. And is to add a shed to the property at the roadside that is six feet by eight feet. And so the current property, property use is residential. Proposed construction is the shit that we talked about. Assistant sewer disposal system type and capacity is septic. Holding 10,000 gallons. That's the number of There's a number of ruins is two. Bedrooms to be added is zero. When did you purchase the property within the shoreline zone is October nineteen eighty? Total lot area is point two four, and I would say that's acres.
One two four acres.
Acres, yeah. And uh, is it with, is it within shoreline zone area? Uh, square footage of the embedded surface within shoreline zone, including all structures, driveways, parkings. Walkways and bridges is seven hundred and one square foot. What is the total area of clear openings and wood limitations? So this, that, that spot is empty, can I estimate is zero? Number nine. That's empty there, then number ten says the total number of structures is one. Uh, present structure square footage is seven hundred and one square foot. Proposed structure square footage is forty eight square foot. And with that, I open the floor for the, start with the application. Do you have any other comments or?
Um, no, we, uh, I've owned a camp for forty four years. I would like a bathroom back, and so to get a bathroom back, I need all the tools in a shed. So it's gonna be on the roadside, and it's just gonna be to to allow me to have some more space in the camp.
All right. So, um, with that said, I open comments for the board on this project.
And just to take note, it's a hundred and twenty. How far away from the lake is it, is the hundred and?
I drew that up, uh, it's twenty two feet. Yeah, if you just add the numbers up, the lakes from the lake.
It's way back.
By the way, it's that.
Yeah, it's way back.
Yeah.
It's almost on the road.
Well, no, it's a good distance from the road too, if you look.
Yeah, yeah.
Forty six feet, I think.
Yeah, thirty feet from the road.
Very, okay, very.
Well, that means it's set there. On certain thing. You know, it's just an unconforming lot, so came here.
So, um.
I I don't have any questions or comments.
I'm good.
Can I review the fact that the, well, this is one rule, we only rule the uh, the shed, the shed is back with the camp. And shed is gonna be like thirty feet from the road, isn't it?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Should be okay.
Mm-hmm, agreed. So, uh, with that, uh, do we wanna vote on the uh, permitting the uh, application? So, um, we're gonna go now through. The uh, what quality findings of fact and conclusions of law, again, this is gonna take just a little bit, it's. Repertative and it's boring, or it's part of the uh, poor and portion of the meeting. All right, so, uh, the applicant name is Cynthia McCarthy, the application address is seventy seven Spalding Point Road. Maps forty six, lot thirty. Findings of fact, the applicant on the date applied, uh, the shoreline permit for adding a six by eight shed. To property at roadside. Uh, the application was presented to the planning board on September fifth of twenty twenty four. The misfindings of fact and conclusions of law were developed in conjunction with consideration of the of the permit application. The conclusions of law, based on the materials. Based on the application materials, testing, more statements, evidence, documents, and all the materials submitted to it. And the above finding of fact, the Dougrey Planning Board finds that the project is. Admitted admitted. For accessory structure allow allowing the use of an uh. Allowed in the in use on a nonconforming lot under section fourteen, table one in the ordinance. And further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions of section sixteen D of the ordinance. Will maintain safe and healthy conditions. The board found this standard was met based on public record. And. Um.
Applications.
Applications of the application, so no, thank you. So we're gonna call that P R A S from now on. So, we're gonna vote on that, safe and healthy conditions, Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Missa Longget is four in favor and none opposed. Will not result in water pollution, erosion, and or sedimentation to surface water. The board found the standard was permitted on P R A S. Mr. Surgeon?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And myself, Sarah Longget, I vote in favor, so it's four in favor, none opposed. Will adequately provide the disposal of all wastewater. This standard was met based on P R A S. Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And myself say yes, so it's four in favor, none opposed. Will not ha- will not have adverse adverse in impact on spawning grounds, especially. Aquatic life, bird, or other wild habitat. The board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And myself, Sarah Longget, it's four in favor, none opposed. Will conserve short cover and visual as well as actual points of access into inland waters. The board found this standard be met based on P R A S. Mr. Surgeon?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And myself, Sarah Longget, is a yes, so it's four in favor, none opposed. Will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in comprehensive plan. The board found the standard was meant based on P R A S. Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And myself, Sarah Longget, is four in favor, none opposed. Will avoid problems associated with uh, plant, plane, development, and use. The board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Sarah Longget, they both four in favor, none opposed. In conformance with the provisions of section fifteen of planning use standards. We're gonna uh, go through the list of standards. And we're gonna decide if they are applicable or not, and we're gonna vote at the end. Minimum lot size, it's applicable. Principal accessory structure, it's applicable. Campgrounds, N A. Individual private campsites.
N A.
N A. Commercial industrial uses, N A. Parking areas, N A. Roads and driveways, N A. Signs, N A. Stormwater runoff, that's applicable. Septic waste disposal system, N A. Essential services, N A. Mineral exploration and extraction. Do you have gold there? Never mind.
Gold?
Gold.
Oh.
Oh, I wish. N A. Agriculture, N A. Timber har- harvesting and land management roads, N A. Cleaning or remove vegetation for activities other than tight timber harvesting, N A. Hazard trees, storm damaged trees, dead trees removed, N A. Exceptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements. N A. Reu- revaluation requirements, N A. Erosion and sedimentation control, that's applicable, huh?
Yes, yeah.
Shoreline stabilization, that's applicable. That's N A. Soils, N A. Water quality.
Yes.
Applicable. Historical archeo- archaeological sites, N A. Resource protection, N A. All right, so based. The board found that this standard was meant based on the evidence and record and further follows. With minimal lot lot standards, principal accessory structures, stormwater runoff, erosion, sedimentation control. And water quality. Mr. Surgeon?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Missa Longget is four in favor, none opposed. Right, condition of approval needed to be met for the Belvedere Shoreland Zone ordinance finding section sixteen D. So we require everybody that comes here, uh, this is part of the uh, conditions of approval is that. Are you gonna be in tune with the manage, manage, manage stormwater runoff? From the newer span structure in accordance with section fifteen I of the Belvedere Shoreland Zone zoning ordinance. And the main D E P best management practices as aligned in the conservation practices out for homeowners publication. Are you guys familiar with that? It is, it is the best management practices from D E P. I think we have a copy of it on our website.
Yeah, if you go to the town website, uh, and you go to the planning board. Under committees, um, you'll see often the left hand side, uh, a link to that document, uh. Uh, we used to hand it out, but uh, now it's only available electronically.
So just keep it with file?
The most common uh, is the crush dome grip line. So you dig a four inch trench along a grip line, you fill it with a brush dome, and that would meet our standards.
Okay.
That's one of the options in that book.
It's the most common.
Yeah.
I mean, with something this simple as.
Right, yeah. You don't wanna make it complex.
So the 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 manual that we're talking about is electronically in the website. And it give you all kind of ideas how to comply with this requirement, okay? And the best one is what Mr. Alexander just gave you the transfer. So you don't even have to go on the website, if you do that, okay, all right?
But the website is good.
Yeah.
So, that said, now is when we stamping the application for good. So based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law on nine, five, twenty twenty four. The shoreline permit application of uh, Cynthia McCarthy. With the above conditions and at the meeting of nine, five, twenty four. Develop this written finance of fact and conclusions of law remain. On the uh, Belgian Board of Appeals and adopted on the following day, which is nine, five, twenty twenty four. So this is about to approve the entire application. Mr. Surgeon?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Missa Longget is four in favor, none opposed. So congratulations, you have your obligation approved.
I have my tool shed.
And.
That whole process, by the way, is legally required.
Yeah.
I mean, doesn't matter if you're building the Empire State Building or a shed.
Do I get anything tonight, or?
Mr. uh, Rosmosis will take care of you with the permit, and we're just signing the application. And you should be ready to go.
What, come in to get it for you?
I'll email you a copy, and when they're done signing, you can have the yellow book. Portion of this application, which would be.
Uh, can you email it to me? Or there are some questions there.
Yeah.
I need to email it to you.
No, thank you. All right. So we move along, yeah? You're welcome. Bear with us for the next uh, item in the meeting. So, uh, the next item in the meeting is, uh. Uh, the discussion of the MMA response to our Lake and Natural Resources Committee regarding. Uh, a suggestion and proposal to add a twenty five foot uh, buffer. Uh, on the shoreline zone application. So, um, I suspect everyone has this printed out. Um. And that the uh, Lake and Natural Resources uh, Committee read the uh. The answer from the uh, lawyer from MMA.
Yeah, we've all read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes.
So with that, with that.
Excuse me, sir, uh, the twenty five foot, um, we weren't asking for a twenty five foot buffer, okay? We were just, we were just, um.
There's a separate issue.
Asking a question whether we would require a vegetative buffer. And that would not be, that amount of that would not be determined, uh, we haven't determined. Um, upon the transaction of uh, property, that was, that was the, um. The question to the lawyer.
Also, also the expansion property, no? No, just transition.
Transfer on, just the transfer.
Maybe to put this in context a little bit, um, here's. That recently, we saw a charge from the select board to us. Was, and we are four members of the plan, uh, I'm committee here, was to work in partnership with the planning board. To modify the natural land zoning ordinance. So I suppose the first thing is that they were here to work in partnership with you.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's for sure. Um, but we noticed that this was on the agenda, so we thought we'd come and be here in case you had any questions about it.
Sounds like it's pretty clear that legally for nonconforming lot and structures that. The ordinance would only, would be required to be amended, uh, to require whether it was foot. Uh, vegetative buffer strip, you may ultimately recommend, but uh, but only in those cases where. Uh, that landowner is uh, already is applying for some kind of construction or or some other kind of major modification.
Right, that's the, that's the opinion.
Yeah.
As outlined in that email, yes.
Yeah, was there also an opinion for, did you also seek and obtain an opinion from the town office, a town attorney, I thought for some reason I saw one.
Oh, there, if there was something, what was, I'm I'm trying to remember, do you remember what that was?
Earlier?
Yes, that we did, um, ask, and I can't remember what that one was.
My recollection, it was similar, if not the same, and the answer was fortunately the same. Yeah, it's not like the old joke about economists, you know, you get twenty of them in the room, you get forty opinions.
Yeah, I remember we did, a couple of months ago, I believe that we asked a question and uh. I don't remember what it was, we've gone through, we've had thirteen meetings, uh. since uh, this thing started, you know, uh, and I don't remember what that was, it's a question, I'm sure.
Is this something that the community wanted, what would have to happen to um, change things, given climate change and all that's going on right now? I can't tell you how many calls I get still at the end of the summer of uh, people who are having erode and have terrible erosion falling from the top, especially in steep areas, from the top of their property to the shoreline. And um, there there doesn't seem to be an awareness yet of how important these buffers are. And so I, I don't know that the community would be behind this, I would like to think that the community is behind it. But let's say it were, or we educated people to understand the importance of it and it became became something that people really wanted, what would we have to do?
That, that's something that I cannot ask you.
Yeah, that's not, that's not in the scope of uh.
The meeting today, I just reviewed the answer from the MMA attorney, right? So, so that said, the line in the agenda is for the board, a planning board to review that uh, opinion and talk about it and uh, you know, make a statement on what we think about it and that will be it. Um, so, that said, I, I hear from Mister Seal that uh, it's straightforward basically that the, in a non-conforming law, the non-conforming follows the property, not the owner. So that's a transfer of ownership, as long as there's no new expansion or new construction, it stays the same, so there was, there was no required buffer there before, it would stay like that.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I'm not gonna be so bold as to, uh, I'm not an attorney, but uh, that, you know, I'm just reading from, from the opinion that we received, the town received and it, you know, for example, on page three, it's bottom paragraph says it is for these reasons, specific standard requirements contained in mains models for land zoning ordinance, for example, just using it as an example, are only triggered when an owner of a non-conforming lot use seeks to expand or alter that lot or use. So, you know, for example, it's, it sounds to me what is legally uh, possible is to have a requirement that when somebody, you know, puts an addition on it, on a non-conforming uh structure uh camp, uh, that it would be possible to amend the ordinance and have it pass legal muster uh, to require at that point uh, the addition of uh, of uh, a vegetative buffer if it doesn't already have one, uh, something along those lines, uh. That's how I read this.
Good question, um, the um. When you transfer property, you're required to have your septic system inspected and brought into compliance, correct?
No.
And under current law, no, seems fair.
Only if there's a malfunction, it must be reported correctly.
I don't know what is the problem.
So in the shoreline zoning ordinance, uh, part of the two thousand eighteen amendments, um, we require that if you're gonna get a um, a permit from the spore um, for an addition or something of that nature, um, the uh, that the, and two thousand maybe, maybe it was two thousand eighteen and, and if you acquired the property after that date, you had to provide a copy of, of the uh, and you bought it uh, since two thousand eighteen, you, you have to provide a copy of the uh, inspection report for that septic system. So, we were provide, trying to provide uh, a uh, encouragement and requirement, but only from that date of those amendments.
And November.
Couldn't go backwards.
We have to November sixth, twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Is a copy of the septic system inspection uh, report documented if it's not malfunction.
Right.
So to, see, if you buy a property today, you have to have a um, you have to have the septic system in, in inspected, is that?
If you're gonna come and get a shoreline zoning uh, permit.
Oh, permit.
Yeah, not, I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction over the real estate market.
Right.
Uh, the uh, uh, you know, the uh, so it's just in that relatively narrow lane that, that we can
But isn't there a state line?
Can and have required, uh, you know, an, an inspection. Now, a lot of lending institutions, of course, require that as a standard protocol, but not all. Which Pat probably knows a heck of a lot more about than I do.
Well, I was just asking, statewide, don't you, when you transfer property, don't you have to have a working septic system or no? No, you have to report what it is, it's, you just have to report on it. Okay.
Like when it was put in and that kind of thing.
If it failed, you'd report it to the town. Then the town would be alerted that this, this system is failing.
But in order, if you need a certification to the town, you have to have an inspection, right?
The buyer, the buyer of a property, shoreline zone is required to inspect, inspection. The results of that inspection, if they fail, they have to report to the town.
I see.
If there's a malfunction.
A malfunction.
Can be a cracked lid.
Yeah, it could be any, anything, not completely.
Something very mild. And there's, there's no enforcement provision in this regulation, it is strictly honor system to report it.
Okay, right, yeah, I just, yeah, I, I was thinking that if you my, I was missing, or my, I felt that you had to have an inspection and, and therefore it was sort of the same thing triggered by a transfer and why would uh, this be?
Why the consistency?
Yeah, why, why couldn't, you know, if you can require that, why can't you uh, require a vegetative buffer, but that's, that's fine, I think, um, I think we got good clarity from that, you know.
Um, so for example, there's a specific requirement in the ordinance that does not allow us to issue a permit if that inspection hasn't been done and, and inspection is required.
One kind of, one, one question on this, say, here's an example. The property doesn't have, it's a non-conforming, say, camp of water fifty feet away. Uh, doesn't have a buffer, any sort or minimal. They want to get an expansion to put a deck on the side. Could, would that trigger, you know, could that possibly trigger requiring a buffer in if we put that into our shoreline zoning requirements? Or, or some other, that's just a.
Well, that's how I read, that that's a possibility.
Yeah, it's possible, possible.
Based on, on this legal opinion that, that, you know, would pass legal muster and, you know, somebody wouldn't successfully sue the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but, you know, I'm gonna say what you can do, alright, but someone will end up suing the town, like George said, and then go through the legal process. And that's gonna set a question. Right?
Well, so when we, when we work on an ordinance, just in the way of background, and I think maybe we mentioned this the last time you folks were in, uh, one of the steps in the process after we've finished our work and come up with a uh, first draft, uh, is to uh, to uh, have the town attorney review it. For questions just like this.
Right, yeah.
Cause, you know, there's court decisions and all kinds of stuff that we don't know about, you know. None of us are the head of school attorneys.
Right.
I mean, just again, in context, we're working and we hope to present to you some of our major ideas and concepts. And one of the major ideas, one is, is reforming the septic. And the second major idea is to establish requirement of a vegetative buffer in the shoreline zone. And right now, we're thinking of a formula that is thirty percent of the distance between the shore and, and not the property.
The house.
The house. And the question is for us, is how do we implement this to the greatest extent possible to make it impactful on the lake? And I, this is my personal opinion and I humbly say this. I spent, I was an attorney in Massachusetts for thirty years and I totally disagreed with this opinion by the MMA Legal Council. I think it has got nothing to do with a non-conforming lot. We're talking about all the lots, whether they're conforming or they're not conforming. That's irrelevant whether they're conforming or not. We're, we're talking about requiring on the transfer or sale. And it could be totally analogous to the state statute, which is the septic statute, which requires a buyer to know that the septic system is, is working, isn't, is valid, is functioning. We could also, I think, require a buyer to make sure that there's a thirty, the, the vegetative buffer zone that we decide on is there. We're trying to determine whether this is a legal triggering event. And in the law that I've studied, you balance the interests. The most simple thing is the most powerful principle in the law is the right of free speech. But we know with free speech, the Supreme Court says you can't yell fire and a crowded movie theater. So you're balancing the interest of free speech versus safety. When you look at the issue that we have here, uh, whether, uh, this lake being impaired, only one of my twenty-one lakes out of six thousand lakes in Maine, we have a serious risk economically health-wise in terms of this lake turning green, just like North Pond. So if you take that interest and you balance it against establishing a vegetative buffer, I think the balance will be in favor of establishing the vegetative buffer and using the transfer or sale as a triggering event. That's my total personal opinion.
And his attorney has a different opinion that's contrary to that. And the lot would be non-conforming, if we put in the ordinance that every lot has to have a thirty percent uh, for example, uh, vegetative buffer, then this lot would be non-conforming.
No, only on a transfer. Only, you can't, we're not gonna say that all the lots are all of a sudden illegal. No, it's only on the sale and everybody would know, just like they know now, when they that if they are ever gonna sell their property, they're gonna have to let the septic in shape. This is the same thing, if you ever get any notice in the future, they're gonna have to put the shoreline zone, the vegetative buffer in shape.
Mister Fine, that, that's a tremendous argument there, very good one too. But the, the, the charge of this board, we're made out of volunteer people that fill this board, is just to take the ordinance as it is and see what we can fit in the ordinance. Now, the charge that you guys have as an advisory committee is to put a suggestion forward to the, to the board and uh, and considering that, that portion, I know that there, there's a lot of passion about the, the maintaining the quality of the lakes, but then there's also, the other thing that the board's gonna be weighing is the, the rights of uh, uh, the land use for property owners and people that have been here for a longstanding amount of time. So, the, the thing to think about these sort of things is that not everybody is, is as educated as the Lake and Natural Resources is about water quality. So there's an educational piece with the community. And even, let's say that we will agree with these changes, this has to go to be voted in town as well by, by citizens. So that said, I, last time, we agreed, after a very healthy discussion, we agreed that I was gonna put a statement for the board to vote on to that tonight to approve the, the, the council having a clinic. Uh, having a, uh, the Seven Lakes Alliance come and talk to us about the impact of fall first in the lake. And uh, and then uh, it was pitching the concept that we will buy to that clinic all the watershed planning boards. So we all have the same information at the same time and then everybody can go to their own town and, and decide to do whatever they wanted to do. So I have a one-page proposal here for the board on it. It will be, I think, the clinic will be great and, and uh, then start marking ourselves in the concept that we might be considering uh, at the point of change of uh, land use or new uh, development. The, any of the concepts that we are, we are uh, kind of uh, brainstorming here. We don't have a final concept yet, I guess, from what I'm hearing. This is, is, is somebody suggesting thirty percent buffer between the lake line and the structure, home structure? How would we know that that's the right number? How would we know it's not ten, or it's fifty percent? So that, uh, assuming all this uh, information that uh, Seven Lakes might be able to provide, so will be the DEP, so it will be weighing uh, new construction techniques uh, to avoid runoff and uh, in the lake and that's, that's the part that are, are members of the planning board that are more in tune with uh, constructions and techniques and the how foundations uh, provide stability to the ground next to the water. So did all these things, we wanna to a certain point be able to weigh it out. We might not even have an answer at the end of all this. But at least we consider it. And uh, uh, are you trying to provide to the board all the tools and data and information that they can have to, to make an informed decision? So um, in order to do this, for me to arrange this, I cannot go in a tangent uh, to have the board give me the chart to, to organize the clinic, that's what we agreed to do.
Well, can I ask? Let me just speak, I live like I have been for one forty years, okay? And, and great fun getting arrested and all of it. And I've seen it happen, right? And having a discussion on the word walk, you know, and uh, but you're gonna have to get other people who open right up to the public, people who don't live in the lake at all. And also, and you're gonna, you gotta, you gotta publicize it and it's gonna take a while to dash it up. And you gotta consider also what's going on, other uh, states would have a lot of lakes, Minnesota, whatever, and they've turned around, they used to have green lakes out there back in mid-eighties. So, and they uh, approach it a different way, but you're gonna get some input. It's gonna be all input coming in, so it's gonna only be a reference, so it's a good idea. Do it, we're gonna, as a community, we gotta do it, so come for that, but you know, you gotta be prepared then. It's not gonna, it'll be a lot of work, so keep that in mind. Whether the money was gonna do it all, yeah, I don't think so.
Mister Action.
You know, my family with Seven Lakes Alliance, I've made that pretty clear. There, I don't like being bullshitted for a cause. And um, so, you know, I'm all good, listen to another preaching system with Seven Lakes Alliance.
The, the only thing I will invite anybody to be open to is just to see what information they got off. I'm not trying to.
I've already been to their meetings, I've already been there. And it depends on what their, their goal is and what they're going for, is what they say.
So.
You know, I've been there in person, I've asked the questions and I've got bullshit and straight along the way.
They do, yeah, this is facts, right, they do have some facts, excuse me.
As long as sand doesn't have dust, it's all good. Seaplanes have very little value, and this is what they told me in a public meeting down here at the Center for All Seasons. This is Seven Lakes Alliance standing up there with Anthony Wilson as their new head guy. And they're feeding me full crap. It's not my first day.
That was just saying, wasn't it? Excuse me.
Yeah, road signal.
Yeah.
But if it doesn't have dust, it's all right, but if you driven down a dusty, I mean, a sandy road.
Right.
I'm just saying, I have the right to say it and you guys can vote the way you want, but I'm good with the shit.
Great. Besides, besides that part of the topic, good, uh, seven lakes.
I don't need to sit there and listen to them, I think.
And, and I, I haven't listened to anything that they have to offer. I don't think, I don't think Mister Surgeon has, in a week, I wouldn't want Nick or we want uh, Mister Baker and.
You can ask both as you want.
Okay. So I, I wish you uh, will have more of an open mind.
No, they shut it, they shut it, only, you know, I'm pretty straightforward. And you bullshit me once.
Okay.
That's it.
Uh, that's fine.
Bring your phone up.
Right.
So, ask a question.
Sure, please go ahead, Mr. Sure, please go ahead, Mr..
So. I, I just wanted to make sure I understand the proposal here.
Sure.
This is intended to be more of a technical, uh, training session.
But I don't, I don't try, I'm trying to add them way, either way or the other.
On, uh, uh, best management practices for stormwater manage, uh, runoff management.
Yep.
As, and I assume at, uh, soil erosion control, right?
Yep, a lot of that here.
Or, uh, critical and go hand in hand, uh, the, uh. I like the concept, uh, whether or not Seven Lakes Alliance is one of the right parties to be, uh. Uh, involved in it, I don't know, uh. The, uh, certainly DEP has technical expertise, uh, in, in, in both those areas, uh. Uh, much as, you know, this would not be unsimilar to what we did with shoreline zoning last, uh, last winter. Uh, but I have some practical concerns, uh. First off, uh. Well, we, my primary concern is do we have the time? I mean, these folks are gonna be coming to us with, uh, I assume a number of, uh. Written proposals for ordinance changes. We're already on a short clock.
Yeah, that's right.
Get those to the SLITE board, uh, by the middle of January, no later than the middle of January. And, um, the, uh, you know, given that and our other workload, um. I, I, you know, I suppose we could do this maybe. I don't know when, but I'm, I'm concerned about managing our workload, a- as you know, we have a number of things that, including a sub, redoing the subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, application of a bunch of other homework that we haven't done. And I just wonder if we have the time to pull this off, uh, and, and whether or not also. It could be done in an hour, or an hour and a half.
And that, that, I guess, I didn't express this here, is a one-time clinic in one meeting. Maybe having me one hour, so maybe we'll have, uh, the presentation from Seven Lakes Alliance will be twenty minutes. DDP will be twenty minutes. And, uh, a contractor, a contractor that can come in and talk for twenty minutes. And, and so that will make an hour and then the next hour we, uh, business as usual.
So, so my question is, you know, could we do this subject justice in one hour? Or three twenty-minute slots, and I, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Well, that, that's better than nothing, I would say, I have a sketch somewhere.
Well, well, yeah, I think maybe we could, we, we, maybe this board here should have a. Range for a discussion with the select board as to. We'll let them know how we feel, no, no, what I, I, our responsibility, what their responsibility, and come up with a different, maybe a different arrangement.
So I, I should make this memo also to the. Select board, this memo that I'm here. But I, but I wanna bother up with the concept of timing. And then the best management practice control and runoff control and soil erosion control. So that said, of, of this clinic, specifically from the Seven Lakes Alliance. One thing that I would like to have information on is, when there's runoff into the, into the lake. And we are, we're using, uh, you know, runoff techniques and so on in construction. And this runoff going to a lake, how long does the runoff is suspended in the lake? And what is the impact? How long the language there? How much phosphorus taking? The, the side of the, this is not all the lake that take the phosphorus, it's just the shoreline zone area, the, the one that is closer to the beach. Okay, so I would like to understand that versus a mechanical, uh. Or a physical structure like a foundation. Is, at least in my mind, when, when Mr. Sakaro and Craig. Uh, spoke about the concept that, you know, that will give more, uh, stability to the ground. Wayne, not having that versus, versus just having the runoff born. What, what grass does to the runoff? I wanted to hear from them what information they have about it.
Okay, sir.
So, so, um, um, great, I think the more information we have, the better decisions we can make. And that's all we wish to, uh, to, uh, have the clinic.
Feel like, we went about these black people.
Sure. If, if we approve it here, and we are good. Then we send it to the select people and say what they say. Then we'll have the last, the last say in it.
That's something we consider.
So I, I missed that passion, yeah.
Yeah, we don't know what the proposal was, so.
Um, and we will invite all the, uh, the, uh, planning boards, the, uh, watershed. Uh, I, I, I personally don't think that at this, at this point. Uh, well, maybe you can tell my, I don't know, that's moving the decisions.
Now, they think of the select board, the people that are gonna make the ultimate decisions, they have all the science.
What's that gonna help you make decisions for variances, just more knowledge, more knowledge?
So, um, I guess I will let that to the select board to do that, it's no reason. Why they can't come, or can't, no, but they, it's open to the public, so I speak all these meanings. So, but they, they made, they made, uh, groups to be included in the clinic. Will be us and, uh, planning board from, uh, other towns. Now, I'm sensing here, uh, a degree of tension that will make me probably pull back and just. Eliminating, inviting other towns, uh, uh. Planning board, because the last thing I want to have other towns take from us is that we are in the middle of a quarrel. About this concept. So if that, that will be the case, then only the clinic will be only for us, this planning board exclusively. So, um, with that said. On the proposal that is on the floor. Uh, I will even strike out, I invite all the planning boards. If, if the clinic will happen, it will be only for us. And, uh, we'll leave it at that.
And I just suggest there's another organization that you might consider, which is called Lake Smart. And that's main lakes, and, um, it's their requirements that. Um, I try to hold people to, when I do a Lake Smart review. And what we're doing has been established based on scientists, I don't know, but, um. That's another organization, get in touch with it. I'd give you a name if you want.
Sure, so now, is any, any contractor that. Uh, we might suggest to come on personally? So I, I wanna, uh, single-handedly suggest, uh, inviting, uh, Mr. Frame. I, I, I see, I wanna see what he will.
I would give someone more experience.
More experience, Mr. Frame?
Already, so this already is becoming.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote.
Let's vote, let's get it done and vote.
Can I ask a question before?
Sure.
We go bombing ahead, um, the, uh, what timeframe were you thinking of doing this?
So I, I would say we'll be, when all these first meeting in October.
Your meeting, you tell me.
This, no way, it's never gonna happen, not realistic.
Why?
Too much work. We're getting, to do it well, if we're not gonna do it well, let's not do it at all.
Right.
Sure. So what, okay, let me ask you this. Uh, what will be able to be done well?
Because it takes a certain amount of planning, it took us. I don't know. Two or three meetings to organize the shoreline zoning, one, we only had to deal with one person, uh, from DEP in terms of the calendar.
Only thing I would say afterwards that, it was in the middle of the winter session, was in the middle of the holidays. So, um.
Then we had to wait for Coleman's availability, right?
He set the date. He, well, he was, in his case, part of it certainly was unique in that. He was dealing with all the, uh, impacts from all the, the winter storms.
I, I also thought that Seven Lakes can, if we call them in, they can come within a week. Uh, uh, finding the, uh, right contractor. If we're just not gonna be Mr. Frame, then it will take me some time, and I, I'm not available for the next two weeks. And Lake Smart will be easy. So one of them, we just, uh, if anything, we just start, we have a DEP. We do have, uh, the presentation from Collins, all taped up. Uh, it's in video. So we had that presentation very recent from January, so the, if the, the.
Presentation, that's not gonna fit into our time frame.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is that the, the Lake and Natural Resources Committee can watch that on the whole, is what I'm getting at.
We can what?
Well, there's, we had a DEP clinic here in January. And it was a very good one.
We've seen another question is why are we repeating this?
Okay, Greg, I'm gonna finish this up here.
Well, I just shouldn't finish it up, we need to vote, so we can stop hashing this out. You can talk all you want, and you're just repeating yourself. If you just bring it up, let's bring it to a vote, and then we can decide on what we're gonna do.
I don't like the tone, uh, Greg.
Well, I don't like you sitting there just rehashing and wasting that time either.
Trying to make the motion and include it in the motion.
Well, make a motion, don't continue to talk.
So I don't appreciate the tone here, Greg. Finally, I will say, I will, we invite only the Lake Alliance and the, uh, Smart Lakes. To do a presentation, presentation only to this planning board, we don't invite anybody else. So, um, I will put, um, I need to entertain the motion for that.
Uh, I'll say it, thank you.
So, uh, and here I need a motion first before a second then.
What's the motion, go ahead.
Well, uh, usually the, the chair doesn't do the motion, but I'll then.
I'll make a motion, uh. To, um, organize and hold. A workshop. On stormwater runoff and soil erosion, best management practices. In October. Of two thousand twenty-four.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna vote Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. CEO.
No.
Mr. Alexander.
No.
And I vote yes, it's, it's a tie, so we will, we'll go anywhere with it.
Way of explanation, I, I wanna say that I don't, as I said earlier, I, uh, support the concept, I just. We got other more important things to be doing, higher priority tasks on our plate already. And this is, um, adding more work on us. Uh, and taking more time away from those other tasks, including things that need to be done for us to. Implement towns ordinances that have been adopted in the last several years is the reason why, um, I, I think it's just. Poor time management.
I ask the question.
Sure.
Uh, we're working in partnership with you, and we as a, as a committee have been meeting with. A lot of witnesses and talking about the issues that you're concerned about. And I wonder if there's a way that we, when we present this to you, can sort of shortcut and summarize all our findings and. What we've found and resourced. So that it can be done, you wouldn't have to go through all this, we're, we're doing all your investigatory work now. You know, we met with Dave Roke, and we met with John Blais, and we got, well, we got. Lynn Gottlieb, we've met with six or eight people testifying, or if we will, or we've talked with. Is there a way that we can? Meld this, give you the information?
The rest of our doing that is putting just a brief report, the brief, the briefer you can put in the better will be for us.
Right, and that's our intention to do, uh, to do that, I actually started writing it today, so. Um, we've had thirteen meetings since February, we've had, you know, uh, and each one's an hour and a half, and we've had. Um, a bunch of people, um. Yeah, Seven Lakes Alliance, but a whole bunch of other people other than them, and, and so we've sort of honed in, and we've gone back and forth and debated. Uh, our, uh, recommendations, and so we're gonna pull that together and give that to you and then, and then. Back it up, um, with, you know, discussion, you know, so we can go over. Um, what we, and, you know, we'd like to do it collaborative, we don't wanna. Just hand it off to you and walk away, we'd like to, uh, see what your thoughts are and how we might change ours, and. We'd also have some good people, I don't know, Dave Roke is a soil scientist and, and, uh, he's got. All sorts of ideas on, uh, from his extensive experience, probably forty years of experience of. Of, uh, uh, buffers, septic, soil, you know, how phosphorus is absorbed. Um, we go back and forth with him, uh, we've, you know, Whitney King is, uh, uh, Professor Colby is, uh, has. Raving on some things, um, you know, uh, uh, John Blais is. John Blais is, he's, he's at Auburn, and he's in charge of basically keeping Lake Auburn clean. And with ordinances and enforcement, and so he's given us a whole lot of advice, and, uh. Um, so, and Hans has been sitting in on the meetings and is giving, uh, us his feedback on the practicality of what we can do, so. So we've, we've been doing this since February, and, and so, you know, and, and it's. I, I think for you guys to get up to speed on this in one meeting is gonna be hard, um. And so I'm, I'm hoping that we can collaborate, you can rely on, on if we can sketch out what we've. Looked at and, and where our findings are, I hope you can, you know, interact with us on it and, and hopefully, uh. Um, we can agree on how to move forward.
My, my suggestion to you will be then, uh, then you guys put the clinic.
We what?
Your, your committee put together the clinic. And then you invite, uh, we. So all, all these topics that you're talking about, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I know, we've had like thirteen clinics, uh.
So, so my, my suggestion to you will be to take half a day. And like I said, fifteen minutes, all these, uh, experts that you have over the time. And do a presentation, full presentation, uh, to the board, invite the planning board, invite the select board. Whoever wants to attend can attend.
So do we do it here?
No, at all, that's for your committee to decide.
So you have, you will come to ours.
Yeah, I, I, with the invitation from, from your committee to the board and any other, uh, board, group or committee that you would like to invite.
And I, I think that, that, that we're asking you is that believe in us and our credibility, we're doing the due diligence, we're doing the work, we've had. Thirteen meetings, an hour and a half each. I'm the secretary, I write the minutes out, I probably give you forty pages of minutes.
But it goes back even further. Think about all the watershed surveys that all the lakes have done, that all the people, I myself have put in and paid for.
I, I, this, I feel for you, I understand your passion. But the, the charge of this, of this board is not to take into that. The charge of this board is a processing board for applications, and then, if we get, uh. Uh, a substantial recommendation to consider to change the ordinances, the select board tells us, do that, uh, look into that, do that, or. If the state requires us to change our ordinance, we have to work on that, but that's, that's our job. And we cannot best ourselves in, 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 in a void, in a journey that you guys have really. Take off and they're doing it. It's, I would love to be in your committee, I love all this stuff, I'm a nerd, right? But, uh, uh, in a very unfortunate way, I cannot involve all my board into, uh, uh. Uh, placing all this time into that, into all this time and all the science online. So I, I will suggest, I kindly suggest, that would be my opinion, that if you, you would like to educate the planning board on it. So you, you guys put the clinic, and you can invite the planning board, and whoever on the planning board wants to attend, we can attend. Well, I should.
So going back to the original question at hand in terms of the process forward, um. And, and how to facilitate it to the, um, and maybe as we discussed last time, there's not a lot of time in. It, it is scheduled to be a large town meeting, um, and, uh. Uh, you know, my own perspective would be that, uh, it would be best that, as you. Can see from the way we operate, that we get a packet. We review that packet before we come to the meeting, so that we're up to speed on whatever the application or the issue happens to be. Uh, I would, if, uh, you're. If uh your recommendations were put into writing, as you're apparently doing. Uh with some ex, you know, justification in terms of its water quality impact, um. And, you know, fairly succinct, um I think that's the best next step. And then uh and then have um, that would give the the board members an opportunity um for at least a week to. To rumen- review and ruminate on that, and then have you folks on the agenda for the meeting. Then that uh the meet next, that meeting to um um to have that back and forth discussion, to make sure we understand. One, what you're proposing, and two, what it's uh what its rationale is and and what the justification is. Uh I might add, uh I I'm a former state administrator, so I deal in prior, I always dealt with priorities. How would you prioritize your recommendations in terms of impact? You know, what's the, what's gonna have the greatest e- environmental positive environmental impact? What's gonna have less um, and uh I for me, speaking for myself, that would be most useful and.
Yeah.
Because it would be uh useful, it it would uh allow us to um. You know, uh not have the discussion between the two boards go on forever and have us miss the deadline that. You know, we're gonna need to, as I said earlier, this board needs to uh have uh actual. Uh shore, uh shoreline zoning uh amendment language to the select board by, usually it's around mid-January.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh because of the public hearing, it requires two public hearings and other stuff and and, you know, I don't know. We haven't had, you know, we haven't gotten into the weeds on this yet, but typically we do a public informational meeting as well, somewhere in the mix uh so that people have some. Uh sense of what they're voting on, um and the unfortunate reality is that by the time you have the public hearing, it's all over but the crime, because you can't change anything. Um the uh um so, speaking for myself, that that that's what I would personally find most useful.
So if I were to say what I felt the most greatest impact is, is something that. I is not, we're not able to discuss even, so I'm worried that I don't need to meet a deadline, I would rather. Have a discussion about this, I don't care how long it takes, lays. Uh but it's not gonna take an hour and a half to explain this, it's not a big deal. It's just some simple facts that we can learn about how phosphorus gets into the lake. And I don't see how I could write that on a piece of paper when you don't wanna even have the conversation about it, so. I think there are some things that we do, I think there are some things that we do wanna write that we know that will be like that, but I on another direction, because I don't think that. We're anywhere near able to write something about buffers. Because if there's so much resistance to it, then I think what we really need to do is have a discussion so that people understand what they really mean. But I do think there are some things that we need to talk about.
To talk about that with our group, our committee, so rather, you you're one voice.
All right, that's just me, and we have prioritized.
And yeah, we we've gone through and prioritized and and gone from the low hanging fruit, because we understand. You know, we have a lot of things that we think would help water quality, but we're honing it down to the uh for this. Where we are right now, we know that we're under a a time constraint, so we've we've prioritized and we can write that up.
That would be great, that would be wonderful.
The the, sorry, to get, I mean, we had a hard time getting, like Dave broke this break, but he's got eight grandsons that are playing sports. In uh Coney uh in Augusta, and his time is ridiculous, I mean, he, we had to reschedule, reschedule, you know, uh to get him, so to try to get. People here that we need to uh to present.
Is that a video tape? It's video tape, is that video tape?
No.
Well, uh I mean, all of our meetings were uh were recorded.
Well, there we go, so yeah.
Yeah, they're all recorded, but you know, that's.
My suggestion might be that you, that our chairman worked with our chairman. And we work with each section that we're gonna present, and we can have a calendar so that we know that we're gonna take twenty minutes or a half hour. And one meeting to to deal with vegetative buffer, and then on one section of the bylaw, the ordinance, and then we're gonna deal with another section of the ordinance. And we all know when it's gonna be, we can schedule it between now and January, so we can meet that mark.
I think that would blow our timeline.
Now, Mister Piper, with all due respect, the board is your court, so you guys gotta decide what you guys do.
It's our responsibility, we're not gonna take any more of your time.
And 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 then and then the what is supposedly the the uh select board charge, your committee was to come up with recommendations. I will spread those recommendations beyond in writing a report, and then when you bring them report, we will discuss it here, the board ourselves and go over that. If you guys wanna put a clinic together and and invite the board, if 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 the this the. The the smaller the time, an hour or two, I know it's gonna be very difficult to do any of that, that would be something for you guys to consider. But from from this uh uh group, I think we're gonna hear is that we would like to see a report with the recommendations, that's it.
That's okay, great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Lauren, I appreciate your passion and your coming to this too.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, the next order of business is uh list of upcoming events, so ordinance application. Uh we need to redo the application for that.
Well, uh yes, that's one of the tasks is to modify it by George, but first, where is it? I was looking for it, I can't find it, the application.
Yeah.
If you don't know, I sure as hell don't know.
You know, we had, right, and and we already had done a uh, we already had done like a suggestions to change it.
All right, within any. Revisions, I mean, because of uh Tyler.
Yeah.
Suggested we make a separate application for revisions versus going through the whole.
Then we, then we work on that, we have to draft that.
Just talked about.
Okay.
So is that our top priority, because the the other thing that needs to be modified, and I can't even remember the whole list, uh we discussed in the past, but the uh. Uh is uh the commercial development review ordinance needs a section for solar farms. Um I personally think subdivisions are probably more likely than a solar farm, but.
We've got a subdivision pending, that's why.
Oh, we do, oh, okay, well, and that makes it our top priority, I guess.
It is, uh.
The uh.
We must have a subdivision rule application somewhere.
We've had it in the past, you know, I I I look at it.
Nobody put me in charge of it.
I mean, it's not in the ordinance, no, no, it's not in the ordinance, it was um, I I have no idea.
Oh, we gotta start working on that very fast, huh?
I mean, you're right, we did have an application, we've actually seen it.
Can can you, can you?
People submitted them.
Can you pull out a file, a whole file and get one and all applications already filled filled out?
See what I can do, I was hoping it was being ordered someplace with, you know, and and instructions and.
We redid the subdivision ordinance a while back.
Yeah, three years ago, two years ago, yeah, and 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 uh. You know, my concern, as I've expressed in the past, is that I don't want some applicant, you know, filling out an application and providing, you know. Thinking that they've got everything they need and and then there's something else and. Or vice versa, that they're providing us with something that that uh we don't any longer require it. You know.
What what's the last subdivision we did to tell that happened?
We haven't done, the only uh one we did was that three lot subdivision on uh Eleventh that never got built. Minor subdivision, um it's not, it's a ranch house, um it it's got a nice new friends in front of it, that somebody built that.
On the right, inside the meeting?
Yeah, it's it's on the left, as you're heading towards Oakland, but that that's the only one, since I've been on the board since two thousand fifteen, we've never. Uh had an application for a a new subdivision other than that one minor subdivision.
I just think the the subdivision of this uh on the right, as you go up the hill, or right, Route eighty eleven there, go to Hammond.
Oh, yeah, that was an amendment, yeah, but that that's, it wasn't a new, that was a minor amendment.
Oh, what what was that subdivision then? Can we use that?
I don't know, before two thousand fifteen.
That all suit up as far as.
Well, have you talked to Mary?
Well, yeah, but I'll just go through the subdivision files and see if I can find, I mean, it's. Uh two thousand fifteen, we replaced a lot of servers by then, so backups happened and documents get buried inside it.
Hmm, all right.
We did come to that.
Yeah, yeah, you can apply, but we're not gonna tell you what you need.
So uh I'm gonna dig out that list again, I know we did that list, all things to do, but definitely that. That uh uh the application that we have some ordinance have to get going here, now, if they take chance, if you find it. Tomorrow or sometime early next week, that we can get a copy of it or something, take a, take a picture of it and send it to us.
No, no sense.
I appreciate it, I'm sorry, we put so much work on your own hands.
That's not what I think, I gotta do it anyway.
So so you guys wanna move to the next item on the on the list approval previous minutes?
I didn't pop it out.
I I know you sent the V I E, you know.
I did, but I didn't print them out.
I did, I mean, you printed out Mr. CEO.
No, you wanna just table it?
Yeah.
Now, we can table that, sure, let's do that, let's table it to next meeting, CEO uh uh update.
Um well, we do have a lot coming up with this, tabling this one application, which is not approvable.
Yeah.
We just wanna see the right documents, I mean, numbers in the holes, in case it goes to appeal, I feel like you will appeal, but how can they? Approve it either, that's set against the ordinance, so. Um so there's that, that's gonna be a short one. There's a uh. Possibility of a fairly complicated one coming.
For ongoing?
Yep, natural zone and also uh. Another simple one, so next meeting could be short, could be long, um. So hopefully we'll have an application to discuss too for subdivision.
Do do you have any sense of when ideally the subdivision application, the the subdivision we want to submit it?
Uh he's getting approvals from uh other agencies.
Oh, D E P quarters didn't approve.
So he's getting, I think, around is at the point where he wants the application to make sure that he can have it approved for us.
Cause the other thing, I mean, in an ideal world that we should be putting together for applicants is guidance is a checklist, you know. Even back in the nineteen eighties, there used to be a subdivision checklist, um um the uh. Uh so that, you know, we don't get a lot of applications that are kind of, you know, half-baked.
Well, and everybody has to be treated equally, I mean, that's.
Well, no, exactly, and that's, you know, not to go backwards in our tonight, but this whole buffer being a condition of approval.
That creates arbitrary decisions. That would be opening up a lawsuit on a Wednesday time.
Yeah.
If one told somebody it was a condition of approval, they could sue us or the town, because it would be arbitrary.
Yeah.
Unless we made it a standard condition for every approval. You know, it's just a plan of thought.
You know what, twenty five foot uh buffers is huge.
Twenty five percent or thirty thirty percent.
Well, I say now thirty three, but initially what, twenty five feet?
Water, that's three feet, but. You know, go tell Mister Alfon, next time.
Yeah, I'm not worried about Mister Alfon, given all the land they got, but. Uh I'll I'll be curious to see what they ultimately, what the specifics are, their recommendation, um.
The problem that I have with all this is that there have to be data to sustain this, real data, scientific data, and. Oh yeah, we can talk about buffer all day long, but how is it that when this runoff, how long it takes to settle down, I mean. What is the big deal that we have a little bit of runoff, I mean, so.
So these presentations they've had have gone for an hour, hour and a half each. There's no way they can condense it to be a twenty minute or fifteen minute.
Well, if you need your presentation, you have to be a functional one.
Would it be respectful to bring the present presenters in until they have fifteen minutes? Nobody's gonna come.
No, but what I'm trying to say is that all these, all these presentations are taped, why do every uh representation, they they. Extract the the main points and present it to us, and they can offer that a second minute for for a Saturday they want.
Or no, nothing from the, I mean, I don't think every, anybody that presented to them doesn't mean that results in a recommendation.
Yeah, it's not the gospel, um but. To answer your question, how long does it take to settle, it depends on the soil itself, sand is heavy, sand goes down pretty quick, clay. Creates a cloud, it might be cloudy for two days depending on the wet action, there's a lot of the area with the land.
It's a factor.
So there's there's too many factors and variables, a five-day windstorm versus, oh, it's calm, but a tree fell uprooted to seven. You know, this, there's no fixed answer to your.
I mean, we, last year, we have uh this rainstorm that we had that took off all the uh uh. Soil that was supporting the railroad over there in the uh Pinyanko, okay?
Yeah.
And all that, all that dirt went to the lake, are we dead? No. So so, you know, I understand the passion for all this, but I really would like to understand this for a scientific way, what the chemicals. When they run to a water, what is it that they do?
But also that lake has the highest flow.
What is that highest flow?
Has the highest turnover, yeah, because it's got the dam on Oakland that's constantly running and all the input coming out of Long Pond, so.
Long enough.
You've got more water turnover in that lake than you have.
In Meson Austin.
Oh, yeah.
So they 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 had the most clear water.
It's amazing how, when we're struggling bringing our lakes down, it's amazing how. Their levels are all right, they can move some water out of there.
Because there's now.
Long and narrow, they can move, they don't have high banks like we have, I mean, we have some low lying areas, they'll get me wrong, but. For the most part, the lawns are like a few inches above, on Meson Austin, all the way down. Uh they can just move some water, they can just, it's it's amazing, we talk about it, they're not there as many meetings. It's like, how would they at that level when we're struggling to move water?
Right.
Because uh it's just, they they can, their dams bigger.
Yeah, and now we have to work with channel, both then channel.
Well, I think also there stays in motion most of the time.
Yeah.
Ours.
You know, they they um. It's not in motion all the time, but they try to use the peak um when they can get the the most money for the electricity, that's when they're running. And they're running a lot of the other times too, but uh they look for that peak money.
Is that the hydro that is behind the police station?
Yeah, that was that was seen.
Wow, it's uh. Up on Liberty Hill, right at the end of Meson.
Oh, so there's two stations there.
Well, well, it feeds that hydro station.
And it feeds the one down there, and it also feeds the one down on the right switch road.
Yeah.
And we just had to.
Do you know anybody that will share?
No, um I'm just from emails.
From them?
From Essex High Road, um but we just had to hold back water. Um this past two weeks, because they were doing maintenance, and they couldn't have a water pump, so. We got a long pond, it's fine, great pond, a little high, an inch high, but we were able to, you know, after that week to ten days. Bring it right back down to where we were supposed to be, but uh we work in conjunction with them, we don't dump water, they don't ask us to dump water. They ask us to hold back when they're doing maintenance, other than that, um they don't ask for anything.
Interesting.
There, I'd like to go back to what was raised uh on the first application and. Uh, I'd like to go back to what was raised uh on the first application and happened in the application and and the. Apparently bad information they were provided by Seven Lakes Alliance. Um. I mean, there's probably more to that story than what we heard tonight and probably my criticism was a little harsh of Seven Lakes Alliance, but. Um. The um, I'm wondering, Hans, have you seen that happen before? I mean, if they're acting as an agent for D E P, are they not being careful to distinguish between? Uh, the Natural Resources Protection Act, which is D E P's jurisdiction. And town shoreline zoning, which is an entirely different statute, set of regulations and standards. Um, I mean, I, 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 you know, um. The town's job is hard enough without people. Out there with some kind of official status giving erroneous information.
I've addressed it. Last summer, I stopped work several of their projects. And we're at, right now, the way it works is every P B R they send in, he sends me a copy of the application. One of these sets of the D E P, you know, so I'm aware of every project they got going. And before it gets approved, before they get a P B R.
Good.
And Stuart has learned what's permissible and what is not. So he's doing a lot better. We're working. I've got more oversight.
Won't be great.
So if you think this is a one-off or?
Well, that happened more once, but that was also before, you know, I got here and. Found that situation, cause I literally had stopped work excavators pulling stumps off of embankments.
Okay, alright.
They were. Making a nice speech for people.
Sorry, um, okay, no, that answers my concern. So, because, you know, there's enough misinformation out there about shoreline zoning as it is without having. Uh, some entity that, you know, has some kind of semi-official status, you know, making it worse.
Yeah.
So.
It makes sense, they're the expert. You know, they're humans.
Well, they, yeah, they're human and and, you know, either or very, very young.
We make mistakes and guess. So my, me, okay, CEO.
Yeah.
Question for you guys.
What?
Um. Our commercial development review ordinance has a sign. Section to it. Talks about internally lit signs in certain parts of the town, okay? I'm struggling with the definition of internally lit sign, these LEDs. That just display test. Is that an internally lit sign or is that an informational sign? I don't know, that's definitely internally lit, okay? Yeah, no, but that was discussed at one back then.
Okay.
Yeah, it's cause that's what I determined, but I wanted to give these people the benefit of the doubt. They're trying to replace a marquee where they gotta put the letters up and the wind blows them off.
Oh, right, right.
With a LED sign, they are not in the development area. Therefore, they're outside the, you know, where they're qualified for an internally lit sign. So.
Interesting. Alright. So discussion. Sure, sure, I saw the ordinance section.
Yeah, this was requested, I think, by you, Jordan, right?
Yeah, it was. So um, this was in. Kind of could say follow up to our decision to, as a, the majority of the book of. Our, to hold all our discussions about the um. Possible impacts of excavation work at close proximity to the lake and. And that discussion went beyond, evolved beyond just the foundation work, but to also. What is done with the, uh, I don't know the correct term of art, but I'll call them excavation spoils. The soil that's generated, the excess soil that's generated. Uh, and uh, and sometimes it's spread around the site. And, and uh, I was just. Uh, this section of the ordinance, which uh is, you know, in in section fifteen, it's one of the land use standards. And it's the, you know, part of the standard uh for uh. The uh. Uh, during. Uh, clearing and removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting. And the actual section or language that I was curious how. It was, you know, I've never, since I've been on board, uh, we've never referenced this, we've never. Made any requirements on applicants based on this, um, but it's, it's on page forty-seven, at the top of page forty-seven, uh. We'll, we'll paragraph, we'll see. And uh, and the context of it is that uh. The um. It 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 applies to the land within a hundred feet of um of of the normal high water line. Uh, and uh, but it 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 calls for. Um. You know, not only protecting trees as it does elsewhere, uh, and and replacing it when necessary, but it also. Uh, calls for the uh, uh, maintaining the existing vegetation. Uh, three feet, under three feet in height, ground cover and leaf litter and the forest duck layer. Well, that on occasion, we've had cases where that clearly doesn't happen. It gets filled with. It's soil fill.
Good text, yep.
And um, and I I'm just wondering if we have more authority than we realized we had in dealing with that issue.
Well, that's what happened in one forty-two, yeah? Some of that?
Uh.
No?
The uh, it. Move, go through that same uh section a little further. Or move on to the next section that applies to this.
So, before we go there, so, so what this section is saying that is that. The buff, the, the, what is there naturally cannot be removed. All, all the way down.
No, not necessarily, I mean, if you have one tree in front of you, they're allowed to still clean up the leaves, I mean. If you have a uh. If you have a buffer already established, but if you have one tree in front of you. That's not saying you can't pick up the leaves in front of you, can't, you don't have to leave the leaves when they fall, that's not what that's saying. The same if it has a forested duff already in place, so it's gonna be forested. Can't be just one tree.
Okay.
I mean, you have a right to pick up the leaves off the wall and stuff, I mean, it's a forested. So that's already something that's forested and already there.
And first, we multiple trees.
But that changes. You take out one or two of those trees, you introduce sunlight. Sunlight's gonna promote vegetation growth. People know it, now it's grass.
Well, I think this is sort of saying we can't go.
Yeah, but going back to George's point, it's like uh. Finally, it's road. Slaughter did his, spread all the spoils out. You know, they moved a lot of rocks to create the foundation. Those rocks got put around. Okay, then they dug out soils.
Yeah.
Well, they put the soils around and landscapes, and now all the, the hollows and dips and crannies. Smooth. So all that duck got covered.
Yeah.
Granted, it was torn up by construction, but I think what this is saying is that it be put back into its.
Return state basis, return state.
Yeah.
Well, that, that brings me to the other section I was gonna reference, uh, you go to page fifty-five. Which is the revegetation standard. Uh. And on the, close to the top of the page, uh. Paragraph uh six, which is in parentheses, the revegetation activities. Uh, it includes all ground vegetation, ground hydro. Be regarded for racist vegetation, uh, and that's an A and B references uh. Uh. The possibly the need to add um, uh, leaf mulch or bark mulch. Uh, so, you know, I'm not aware of us ever having required any uh either of those uh as a, you know. As a condition of approval or anything of the sort when this, when this might have applied. And I, and like I said before, I'm just wondering if we're not fully uh implementing the ordinance.
Yeah, so maybe we can come up and say specifically, uh, reference uh those two areas. And we, we could put it out on the application.
Yeah.
Provable, you know, stat.
So, well, what about the rocks? You know, when they dig a rock out. They require them to remove it from the site, but then they push it to the edge. Because. There's another situation growing in town where they get pushed to the edge and now say, well, that's a safety hazard, they wanna. Backfill to eliminate injury from people climbing on the rocks.
Well, well, uh. The reason, that's one of the reasons I bring this up is. Going back to the point you made earlier, Hans, when, when you eliminate all that irregularity in the uh. Uh, with, with soil fill in, in the, in the forest floor. Uh, and you eliminate the duck layer and, and, and some people, you know, then end up planting grass. Um, you've increased the amount of stormwater runoff, cause there's, uh, because of the smoothness uh in overland flow. And in all likelihood, you're probably also increasing the phosphorus runoff. So um, that's where I'm coming from.
I agree. The main, the answer would be, with these ones that are close like this. There's more of the site visit each time, uh, so we can look at the ground. And put it in conditions, so what needs to be, what needs to happen with it. And I will say this, um. This bark mulch has become more and more prevalent voluntarily. With people.
Right.
That I've been working with, um. We've been eliminating grass and laying fabric down and. And um, putting four inches of bark mulch over. And um, yeah, uh, that's a no-mow situation.
Yeah.
And it's great for everything.
Who wants to mow it or?
Yeah. That's already established as open space, I mean, that's not new space, that's. It misses up above a hundred feet, but some of it. Where it used to be long, going down, they've taken over and mulched it. And it's not a Belgrade, it's wrong, but um.
And it's happened here in Belgrade over even seventy fields.
So. Put a fabric down, um. And, and there's this bark mulch, you know, holds pretty good, and um. Um, each year, they kind of just refresh it.
Yeah, well, I like your idea of, you know, cases where this may be an issue of, you know, maybe we need more site visits.
Then we can, then we can put more restraint, so what it should look like afterwards.
Yeah.
Cause the berm is important, um, and inconsistencies and, and a burn towards, towards the lake side and. I mean, that is, you know, I'm all for that, uh, keeping that and, you know. Not everybody needs a lawn down through there, so they can use this mulch thing. And still keep that berm to stop that water, the runoff, but I mean, I'm still all for all that stuff. Cause that stuff does work, I mean, no. I'm not totally. Um, entirely, I think, um. So, I think when they're that close. Maybe we need to go there and set up pictures and just get a visual of it. And if they're allowed to do it, then we can put these standards to it.
Well, that, that seems like a reasonable approach to me.
Is there any need to brought up that language into the uh, in fact, finding the facts, if we need them, we don't, we don't want.
Well, I, I, I think, uh.
So we don't forget it, what is that?
Well, to begin with, the condition portion.
Yeah, good, and, and, and in terms of the.
The number of conditions is always standard, but we don't, depending on the application, that might apply or might not. And we can, we can check it like a supplier would, would just say N A, the same as last.
Well. Yeah, I, I don't know that this comes up often enough to justify having, I mean, in one sense, I, I could argue both sides of that. I, 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 you know, on one side, does it come up often enough that we need a standard condition of approval? Um, my impression is maybe not, I, but maybe I'm wrong about that. The other, I can argue the other point that if you, we have a standard condition of approval, then we're treating everybody the same with the same language.
I would think anytime you have excavation, like the foundation. Yes, those excavated soils get removed from the site, very rocks too. Cause if you just push it to the side. You're changing complex, you know, the landscape.
No, it's gonna change to a step, regardless.
Well, like George said, Rob, the neighbors are all bitching that now their properties are flooded. There's all those crannies that used to hold water and let it soak down in, they're gone, now it just sheds off.
But that's, that's a property down there in Ivy period? Yeah, you're right, I, I looked at that once and that, you're right, it's changed altogether. Yeah.
Yeah, kind of like what it used to.
So Sarah, to get back to your question and the findings of fact and law. I, I mean, one of, in that big long list that we have, you know, one of them's clearing and or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting. That's section O, which this requirement would be in, so that would be the place where we would need to.
Put it in.
Say, yes, it does, or no, it doesn't.
Okay. So. Just in my mind, we don't have here the next perpetual thing. So our new board member who, who know that, we call those two things that we talk about tonight. So if we, if we.
Someone wants to write something wrong, I'm ready.
I could take a whack at it.
We, we, we put both strengths in a portion of defining facts and then, uh, like, uh, like a box. If, if it's gonna apply or not, next to it, so it only applies if we check it. I'll read my thought in it.
Write some note, bring it to us.
Yeah, I could do that.
I would appreciate you brought that on, Mr. Tim. So, it's very good stuff.
So, something a little different than the, for Donald, uh.
Okay.
Sounds like we, we've got. Heard, uh, the decision on the stiffs, with the stiffs. Can I ask you, I think I get a grasp on it, uh, they said it wasn't an accessory or. Then what was? In a nutshell, what happened there?
I was gonna dedicate a. Another meeting for that discussion because I'm still getting feedback from the attorney. I read it like you did, the, the judge says. These are not. Principles and accessory, they are both principles. Which was, which is not allowed.
Uh huh.
So how does one become accessory to the other? And it boils down to definitions. And last year, twenty twenty-three, the mainland use definitions got redone. Oh, I printed them off. I'll share them with you now. I was gonna say, but I'm meeting where we discuss this, but.
Yeah, no, that's fine, Hans, if you want me. Yeah, cause I, I mean, like. You, I think, I, I, that raised more questions for me than it answered. It provides this precious little guidance on how to move forward, well, what's an accessory structure?
I believe. I've got two more trainings coming up this month, going for, uh, Clark will be at both, not going down, but um. It basically takes the shoreline as own ordinance and throw it out the window. Because it allows two principles, so now I guess the steps have to say, is your old cabin gonna lose the kitchen? Or is there no one? Bonk houses. I'm no plumbing whatsoever. It's the new definition, or it's an old definition, but it's been bandered around where. One agency says it cannot plumbing, the other says it can.
Well, and and you know, that's one of the questions I have, because we get applications somewhat regularly for bunk houses. And and, you know, we deal with them the same way we did with the Joneses, uh the way we avoided. We thought we avoided uh having it being accessory structures by making sure it wasn't a residential dwelling unit. We're not allowing it to have a bathroom, I I mean, a kitchen. And um and that obviously isn't good enough, well, and and and. Uh and so, you know, I mean, that definition, which is in our ordinance and also in chapter one thousand. D P's minimal guidelines is exactly the same, uh maybe they divide it up a little differently. But but the language is basically the same, uh you know, this is a problem for Belgrade, it's a problem for a hell of a lot of towns, some of the whole state. This, but you know, getting back to bunk houses, you know, one of the things they made a big issue about is you're not supposed to duplicate. The functions uh uh in the accessory dwelling that you have in your primary, in principal. Well, is that, if you, does that mean bunk houses are illegal? I don't know.
Well, even a workshop that has a sink, okay, because this is, there's another scenario in this town. Though I was reading this, I'm like, holy smokes, I might as well just stop it. Processing application, we have no permits, but if you have a garage. And it has a sink in it to wash your hands, you make it a workshop, whatever you might wanna call it. Well, the next owner comes and says, well, it's got plumbing here, I'm gonna put in a toilet, because I don't want a house, so now you got a toilet and sink. Well, the lady in the house or somebody says, you know what, I'm gonna start making pottery out here, and then bring in a kiln.
I'm gonna wash the machine up there too.
Exactly, no, this is happening, someone built a barn, they had a sink, they had a toilet, and they're adding implement, but implement.
That would show.
Saying it's it's a workshop, it's a hobby crafting, we're we're doing lessons in pottery, we're doing lessons, we're firing things. They got an oven, they got the whole, you know.
And well, anyway, I um that's fine, I, because I I was actually gonna bring that up too, you had, you know. Because I uh, I mean, I I've gone through it, I. Maybe I understand it, maybe I don't, uh uh my wife's looked at, she's not quite sure what to make of it, um. Uh she actually had the same question you asked Pete, why all the citations from how to state court decisions? And there's nothing we can do about that kind of stuff, but.
But I was just kind of wondering what the the outcome of the whole thing was, I couldn't really figure it out.
What's gonna get get kicked back down to us, we will have to have a meeting and discuss it. Basically, to vacate the decision. And come up with what's the course of action.
Yeah.
Somebody.
And it might be outside of this room.
On a different plan, we were saying that that decision was great.
What's allowing to. Room is full of.
Yeah.
Got a house on this side of the room, and a rising apartment over here, so now you're gonna have two principal dwellings. It it basically through the shoreline zone ordinance of only one principal dwelling.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, the other thing about that and, you know, at the time, I even. You know, I I mean, I voted to approve that project and 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 with the condition that there'd be no uh kitchen facilities. Um thinking that was the right right approach at the time, but you know, I understood the argument that this. Structure is damn near as big as the the principal one, and the court made a big issue out of that. They didn't define it in any meaningful way, but they, you know, decided that even though it was smaller, it was. Close, you know, they were close enough in the same in size, and so that raises the question in my mind. How big can accessory structure be? I mean, they didn't provide us with any guidance on that.
Um I've seen one that says it's a percentage of the principal.
Well, and and that would make sense to me, but you know, um. I I actually went around, I went online, looked at, uh as I've done in other issues. What towns like Belgrade that are lake communities, what they have, they all have very, very close variations of what we have. From the definition of accessory structure, so I found nothing that was of any use.
I think following the bar, the chapter one thousand is gonna have to deal with this one. They're gonna have to set up some rules, and I I think you might see the A G getting involved.
Okay, that that would not be a bad correction, because as long as they provide us with enough guidance in that definition, because uh. Uh otherwise, well, you know, we're all beyond this board. And and you may be working for the town of Augusta or whatever, the city of Augusta or wherever, the city of Portland, it'll be head chief come to by the code enforcement. City of Portland, and 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 then another slot, another board will come in and and make the same.
Well, for a better term mistake. Well, and to actually take it to the attorney general and say, what's up with this?
Because that's, I I I even wondered if he knew about the decision, but I take it you provided him with a copy or or did you already know?
I haven't been able to get him on the phone.
Yeah.
And he's not responding to emails, usually he responds, but I will see him next week. I mean, in the next two weeks, I'm gonna see him twice in one week, so.
Okay.
I'm. I'll just walk one corner and get to the back of it.
And a follow up, you haven't heard anything from the attorney for the um. Um, well, either attorney for that matter, on where they, you know. What's gonna happen next with the specifics of that application, I mean, it's kind of. Interesting how they got remanded to the Superior Court, who's gonna remand it to the Board of Appeals, who's gonna remand it to us.
The Board of Appeals is gonna have to have a meeting to say, hey, we gotta vacate this and send it back, it's gonna be a three minute meeting.
What about kid means that we we don't wanna fight anymore?
No.
It pulled back their decision.
Yeah, I mean, basically, they vacated, if you will, it it did away with their permit.
It's nullified.
Yeah, nullified their permit.
Um mazer. They decided where they can put their shed, so they're gonna be at the next meet house over there. But it's it's up a hundred feet, it's up on the road where they said they didn't wanna do it, then do it, well, that's where it's gonna go. So so being resource protected accessory building, it's a resource protection area, it has to come here, otherwise I was just gonna say, fine. If it passed a hundred feet.
Yeah.
It's going with you, but I can't, so you're gonna have to see them, go through your findings at that.
Alright, so I will enter doing a motion to adjourn.
Like motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so we have a motion, a second, Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Sue.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, and we're showing this is what, yes, no, no, we're done.
Very good.